I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Eau Claire School Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we in compliance with the open meetings law, Secretary Iverson?
Yes, we are.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please, for verification of quorum?
Commissioner Beekah?
Here.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Boo?
Here.
Okay, thank you. That brings us then to the public forum, and I, yeah, I don't have my list of people, so Secretary Iverson is retrieving that. No one has signed up. Okay. That takes us then to the superintendent's report. Dr. Harterbeck?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am just getting logged in, and I would like to go over the upcoming events for the school board on their calendar. So if you'll just bear with me for one second. So all of the meetings that I will be discussing tonight take-
Thank you. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. All of the meetings that I will be discussing tonight take place at the administration building, unless otherwise noted. So tomorrow, there will be a meeting of LEAP at 4:00 to 4:30. The family advisory council will meet tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m. The equity review committee for all night graduation parties will meet on January 14th at 6:00 p.m. Budget development committee will meet January 15th at 1:00. On January 17th, the demographic trends and facilities planning committee will meet at 4:30. On January 21st, the policy and governance meeting will take place at 8:45 a.m., and that will be followed later that evening by a regular school board meeting. And then there will be members of the school board that will be attending the WASB convention in Milwaukee from the January 22nd to the 25th. So tonight, just two quick updates. We want to congratulate Montessori. They are the proud recipient of a $98,000 grant from Wisconsin Fast Forward Teacher Training and Development. They have received this award, which will allow four Montessori teachers to complete a two-year training program at UW River Falls in Montessori curriculum and instructional techniques, and it will also provide money for eight pair of professionals to attend a three-day Montessori assistant training. So I think we join Montessori in feeling that we're very honored to receive this grant and the support for the Montessori program, and really excited to see how it's going to strengthen that program and build the capacity of their staff to further implement Montessori principles. And then you may have seen in last, at the beginning of the week, last week, the information and news about our business partnership with CVTC, and the fact that we will be able to award an associate's degree with CVTC for students who complete a four-year program in business management while they're still in high school. This represents kind of a culmination of a four-year project for us as a school district. It represents between an $11,000 and $13,000 investment in each student who completes this four-year program. And when they complete the program, as they finish high school, they come out of high school with a two-year associate's degree, fully prepared to enter the workforce, and debt-free. So we are very excited about this program, very excited to have this partnership, and we look forward to working with them. And I want to particularly highlight the work that Jim Schmidt, Andrew Sevelin, and Dave Oldenburg have done on this project. It's been, it's been kind of a long slog, but we've gotten there, and so I just want to say congratulations to them as well. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. For my report tonight, I, first, I want to recognize the Memorial Madrigals. I was at the inauguration today in Madison, and they represented our district very well. They sounded wonderful, so great job to those students and their families, and to their director. I also want to share that we have an upcoming school board election. We have four candidates running for three open seats. The candidates are incumbents Erin Harder and Eric Torres, and we also have new candidates, Tim Nordine and Eric Azur. And you'll note that I didn't include Chris Hambach-Boyle on that list, and Commissioner Hambach-Boyle will not be running for reelection, and we'll look forward to giving you a lot of kudos and congratulating you and honoring you at a later time, but these are our candidates, these four candidates, so definitely stay tuned to hear about candidate forums that will be coming up and questionnaires. Do we, okay, who do we have today? Do we have any candidates here? Oh, good. So we have Eric Azur in the audience. Thank you for coming. Okay, and, oh, and I also have to make sure to recognize Abby Green, because I believe it's Abby's last board meeting, joining us, and we will be replaced at the next meeting with her sister Molly. So we're still getting, we're still going green, so to speak, just, just a different sister, but we'll look forward to your continued engagement with us, and I'm sure that you'll still provide her lots of ideas and you'll be a great partner, partner duo together, so, but definitely want to thank you for your, for your service to our district already. And, yeah. So that's all that I have for my report, but student representatives, do you have a report tonight?
Well, speaking of the Memorial Madrigals, show choir season has kicked off. Student council completed their Toys for Tots and clothing drive, and in addition, winter sports, including the pep band, so that's band collaborating with basketball, I believe, basketball and hockey, is in full swing.
Yep, show choir season and sports are going good, and finals are coming up, so students are up for that. And I also just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity to serve on this board. It's been a wonderful learning experience for me, and I definitely look forward to see my tune up here, but also staying engaged and keeping up, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. That brings us then to school board committee reports. Is there a report from policy and governance?
Yes, we briefly, we didn't meet formally this morning because we didn't have a quorum, but just for the board's knowledge, we received a number of recommendations from Ginny Brown, the author of, the original drafter for our policy on concussions, and we decided to request, I mean, we didn't decide, but we asked the drafters to include those recommendations into the final draft, which we will bring to the board next session.
Great, thank you. Is there an update from the budget committee?
We haven't met since the last time, but we will be meeting on the 15th.
Okay. And LEAP?
No updates, but we're meeting tomorrow.
Awesome. Okay, and that takes us, do you have a legislative update tonight, Commissioner Torres?
No, I was just going to mention the convention in Milwaukee, but it was already mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then that brings us to the consent resolution agenda, so if you'd like to poll any of these items, please indicate that, but I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of closed session, December 11th, 2018, the minutes of December 17th, 2018, the minutes of closed session, December 17th, 2018, the human resources and employment report, the Head Start grant approval, approval of the 2019-20 school calendar, the third cash advance on line of credit, fourth cash advance on line of credit, and renewal of the McKinley charter school contract. So I would entertain a motion from someone to approve 7.2 through 7.10.
So moved.
Okay, okay, and I do not believe there are other, there are financials, so we'll do a roll call vote with this.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Commissioner Beekah?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and that motion carries. That takes us then to our one individually considered resolution, which is the 2019-2020 schools and programs not available for open enrollment for regular education and special education students. And we have Ms. Kohler presenting on this. Good evening.
Good evening. So with January here, it's time to begin thinking about the 1920 school year already, and I want to talk to you tonight about open enrollment for 2019-20, 2019-2020, yeah. The open enrollment window has, is open, and so we have families from other districts who are looking to come to Eau Claire, and our job tonight is to really look at which schools and/or programs would be open for families from other districts that would be interested in attending. Open enrollment does allow non-resident students to apply for full-time enrollment in Eau Claire, and it allows us to focus really on our partnerships with families and community members. Typically, when families apply for open enrollment, it is linked either to social emotional growth or academic achievement as well, so that is how open enrollment is aligned to our strategic plan. The cycle for open enrollment really begins in January of each year. You can see that we have four distinct periods within the open enrollment cycle, and in January, we are required to establish which schools and programs will be closed to open enrollment students. And there are a few reasons that we can close programs or schools to open enrollment, and so what I want to do over the next couple of slides is talk to you about which programs or schools we would recommend be closed to open enrollment in 2019-2020. A school or program can be closed due to space limitations, and it's recommended that the North Star Middle School Arctic Zone be closed to open enrollment during next school year due to those space limitations. It is also in the performance agreement of the Arctic Zone that it's closed to open enrollment, that it's for Eau Claire Area School District students. You can see here that there are other programs that we recommend be closed to open enrollment for next year. The district can close specific programs to open enrollment based on the staff capacity and the amount of service provided to a pupil within their IEP. And based on our staffing capacity, it's recommended that we state that there are zero seats available for open enroll students in each of our eight cluster sites around the district. Closing the cluster programs at these sites doesn't close the entire school to open enrollment, it just closes the cluster program within that school due to the staffing implications for students that oftentimes would have one-on-one services within their IEP. So our recommendation, if you look at our cluster programs, we have one cluster program in pre-K, and we're recommending zero seats available in that program. We have four cluster sites at the elementary level, again, recommending zero spaces available, one cluster site at middle school, and two cluster sites at high school.
Kim?
Yes.
Ms. Kohler, can I ask you maybe to clarify a cluster site for new board members that may not know what that means?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
All right. So a cluster site is a school that offers specialized programming for students whose needs might not be able to be met in their neighborhood school. So you could be a student with an IEP that requires quite a bit of physical therapy, quite a bit of speech and language therapy, and quite a bit of time perhaps in the resource room or away from the general education classroom. And we have schools throughout the district that are cluster sites for those students. So I might not live in the DeLonge attendance area, but I have an IEP with those needs outlined within it, and so as a district, we would send, if that were my case, I would go to DeLonge anyway, because that's the cluster site for middle school. So, thank you. So those are the, the programs that we would recommend would be closed to open enrollment, and so what that means is what would be open to open enrollment. So with that in mind, it's recommended that we have seats for open enrollment in the locations that you see up here on this slide. You'll note that all schools are listed as open enrollment, which could appear to be contrary to the September 25th, 2017 motion by the board. That motion indicated that all open enrolled students would be placed at North High School or on a track that places them at North in their high school career to foster the emotional growth of students. We have placed all open enrollment students in elementary and middle school on a path that feeds North High School, so they can keep that same cohort of peers, K through 12, if their family chooses to stay in the district, K through 12. And I just want to take the opportunity to share two things with you about that. Although we didn't place, we don't place any new open enroll students at Memorial South or any of the elementary schools that feed South Middle School, we do have previously enrolled open enroll students at those schools, and in order for them to continue to be able to attend there, we do want to keep the schools open technically to grandfather those children in, because we don't, just like we're looking out for the social emotional health of students that might someday end up at North High School, we, we don't want to upset a peer group kind of midstream, so what we'll do is we'll look for a logical transition, which would be the transition between elementary and middle or middle and high school.
So just to clarify for anyone who's listening or watching, the, who maybe is interested in or supported our decision to close North, logistically, any new it is that is in effect, but legally, it has to be open on the books for the grandfathered students to remain. Thank you.
Right. And then, second, we have received some feedback from families that are interested in the Eau Claire School District, but have declined when being placed at North, DeLonge, North Star, or one of those elementary schools that feed into them, and they've usually stated one of three reasons in declining that. Sometimes it's simply due to geography. So for example, we've had a conversation with a family that lives in Mondovi and was tentatively placed at North High School, and it's a 40-minute drive. That's a long commute for a parent if they're driving, or for a young driver every day. So sometimes it's just geography and the location of where the family is living versus how far the north side school is from them. In other cases, it's come down between the level of schools, so I talked about kind of those natural transition times. If I, for example, am a Fall Creek student who's attended K through five at Meadowview, and now at my natural transition to middle school, I'm going to go to North Star, I have a new peer group, whether I'm at North Star or I go to my home school district. So sometimes the parents are thinking, well, if, if they're going to need to make new friends and learn new teachers, the logical transition time is the logical time to have them do that. And other times, it's simply due to preference, you know, quite honestly, a family may just prefer one school over another, and if they can't have their preferred school, they sometimes decline the open enrollment spot, even though we've approved them. And that has happened this year.
Ms. Kohler, do you have the numbers on, on the people that have declined?
I do not have that today, although we do have a request and we're working on-
Okay.
-information for that.
Thank you.
So with that background information, like I said, the items up here on the slide, we would look at saying that we have 20 community sites that are open to open enrollment, all 13 elementary schools, three middle schools, and two high schools. So in summary, you can see here which programs would be closed to open enrollment, the Arctic Zone and the cluster programs for special education, along with those that would remain open. And with that, I'm, I'm ready for any questions or comments.
Commissioner Harder?
I just, as a parent at CVMCS, I happen to be aware that it's also closed to open enrollment, but I, is, because it's a charter school, it's not on this list?
Actually, it, it has been closed in the past, and Mr. Johnson and I spent quite a bit of time talking about that, looking at applications and enrollment trends. He is comfortable not having it be closed for the next school year, and we would, the way open enrollment works is you apply to the district. So if, for example, somebody applies to attend Montessori, and we find at that grade level there is not space available, we are confident that we would be able to place them at another school in the district, and then they could choose to attend that other school or not.
Yeah, I had a question about Prairie Ridge, closed, not just the special ed piece. The cluster special ed part is closed, but Prairie Ridge is open, or the waiting list for Head Start doesn't allow that either?
Our practice has been to place open enrolled students at community sites because parents provide transportation at community sites, and that's a condition of open enrollment.
Got it. Thank you.
Can we get numbers on, or maybe, maybe perhaps, maybe you have it in front of you, students who've open enrolled into the Roosevelt area?
I do not have that in front of me.
I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if it would, if that was an area that was discussed as far as maybe closing it to open enrollment. I know that we've, what we have employed are the flexible boundary-
Right.
-strategies, but I'm not sure if that's something that was discussed.
So I'll just explain a little bit about open enrollment. When I, if I were to apply to Eau Claire, I am just saying, as a parent, I would like my child to go to the Eau Claire Area School District-
Right.
-and it is up to the school district to assign a school. So we do assign schools based on class size and total enrollment, so we would end up placing children within the district where there is space available. So whether we, we list Roosevelt or do not list Roosevelt, just based on size or class size, that might be a determining factor of whether we would place a child there.
So, and that makes sense, and I, I think that perhaps for the community's sake to know that even though it lists that these schools are open, that there's a great deal of discretion that's used to divert families or relocate, or, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions board members have? Okay, seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the 2019-2020 schools and programs not available for open enrollment for regular education and special education students.
So moved.
Okay, and we can just do a voice vote for this one. All who's in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Kohler.
Thank you.
And that brings us then to adjourn to committee, and the first committee report or item for discussion tonight is an update from the, I shouldn't have said thank you because you're still up here.
I'm next.
I just forgot that. Update from the Equity Review Committee for Athletics and Facility Use for Community Groups.
So on behalf of the Equity Committee on Athletic Programs and Facility Use, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. After several months of study, discussion, and problem solving, the committee is coming forward tonight with recommended revisions for Exhibit 830, facility use, and I'd like to introduce to you two community members who served on the committee and have done quite a bit of work for this recommendation, and they're going to be speaking with you tonight, talking specifically about community use of Eau Claire Area School District facilities. I have here the co-chairs of the committee, Bob Krone and Lynette Hessie.
All right, good evening. Thanks for having us. Lynette and I are going to tag team this a little bit, so I'll kick things off and then turn it over to her, and then we'll both be available for any questions or comments you might have at the end, and we certainly welcome those. So the, as you can see here, the charge of our committee, you know, was created for the purpose of identifying issues of equity, access, and consistency in athletic programs and related facility use, and then to come to you with some recommendations. And I'd like to highlight too that the, the term athletic programs in this context refers actually to both Eau Claire School District athletic programs, as well as community athletic programs or organizations, such as youth sports organizations and other community members. You know, why was our committee formed? Well, our, the formation of this committee was really sparked by feedback and concerns from multiple stakeholders, including student athletes, parents, community organizations, and coaches. And, and the feedback and concerns that are out there, they've actually been validated by past surveys that have revealed low ratings and some community dissatisfaction regarding facility access and use. So we'd like to commend the board for actually forming our committee. I think that's a smart move, and, you know, thank you for our consideration of our recommendations. We're, we're here to hopefully help you guys out. Next slide. So why is this an important issue? Clearly, it aligns with the strategic plan, specifically those three areas highlighted their academic achievement, student social and emotional growth, and partnership with families and communities. And it's important to note that there's, there's a significant amount of research and data that provides supportive evidence on the value of activity, extracurricular activities such as athletics. For example, the National Federation of State High School Associations found that extracurricular activities such as athletics support the academic mission of schools. They are not a diversion, but rather an extension of a good educational program. Students who participate in activities such as, such as athletics tend to have higher grade point averages, better attendance records, lower dropout rates, and fewer discipline problems than, than the student population in general. So this is a very important issue to, to make sure that we have a good grasp on. It's also important to note that in our community, this involvement in athletics often begins well before high school. A lot of people think when you're talking about athletics, we're only talking about the high school teams. No, we're talking about all district teams, including the middle school level teams, but we're also talking about athletics in the context of community organizations, which is why it's important that the district strives to embrace these community organizations, find ways to work with them to encourage this involvement in athletics, and even elementary age students. Even though it might not be a district team, it still is tied and will lead into better involvement as they go through the district all the way through high school. Now, last note on this is the, you know, the best school districts, they understand, appreciate, and continue to invest in athletics, and our committee wants to urge the board to never lose sight of that. All right, so who are we, or who is our committee? Again, we'd like to commend the board and the administration for assembling a wide variety of stakeholders to ensure that multiple perspectives were taken into consideration. Among the, the committee members that are listed here, we have district parents, student athletes, I really want to highlight the fact that we had, had student athletes from both high schools, and perhaps it was their perspective that was most valuable in this process. We also had representation from the booster clubs at both high schools in town, and representation from multiple youth sports community organizations. So again, a wide range of, of members on the committee. Next slide. Okay, so here's the, the timeline of our committee. We didn't start meeting until September, but we met several times throughout the fall, which, which, you know, leads us to today, January 7th. One thing I want to clarify, it says here on January 7th tonight, we're presenting the recommendation, our recommendation to the school board. I want to highlight that this is, we kind of broke things out, and Lynette will get into this a little bit more, but we broke things out into two categories, community use of facilities, and Eau Claire School District use of facilities. So the focus tonight is on the community use. The district use will be presented, I think, tentatively maybe next month, but at an upcoming meeting. All right, next slide. So as we met as a committee and had many discussions, there were some reoccurring themes that came up. there were some reoccurring themes that came up. And a lot of them centered around substandard customer service. And also, well, you know, a lot of these... A lot of things in the policy, they're well-intended, but they had unintended consequences. So we're not here to accuse anyone of specifically setting out to cause angst in the community and cause dissatisfaction. But we are here to do... But what we are here to do is maybe help you understand why some of those things did result in some angst and frustration. And sometimes at the committees, when we started sharing specific examples of some of the things that caused frustration and have caused negative feedback, sometimes, you know, the floodgates opened up. So we're not going to air all that here tonight. But Lynette's going to share just a couple of examples just to give you a flavor of some of the things that were discussed. So I'll turn it over to Lynette.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here as well. I'm one of those people that's going to have to do this. I don't know are any of you with me. But we had met several times over the winter month and really commend the whole effort in the community. Very collaborative effort. It was really... It was really positive experience for me. And so I'm here for a couple of little reasons. I have a couple of little anecdotal stories to start out with, kind of that sparked some of the conversation with me. And like Bob mentioned, we are going to talk about a proposal for the community facility use tonight and talk about the Eau Claire School District community use... I mean, facility use at a different meeting. But I have the pleasure of occasionally substituting on a tennis squad that plays in the summer. And they are very self-proclaimed. They call themselves senior citizens. And they asked me to sub for them, and I have over the years. And last year, we met at Regis High School. And I, you know, said, "Oh, we're moving locations." And they had just mentioned that for about 20 years. Now, no one could remember the exact date. They had been playing tennis outside different Eau Claire School District tennis courts. They played at DeLonge, and they played at North Star and North. They played at different places. But this year, that went... Two years ago, when they went to make their facility use reservation, they were told that they were no longer able to reserve that time because it was in conflict with the facility use policy. So it was interesting. They had told me that story. That was a couple of years ago. You know, I kind of was like, "Okay." And then I said, "Well, what about Regis? You know, do they have a similar facility use policy?" And they had mentioned to me that, you know, Regis really openly encouraged them to play on their courts. And when our senior citizens said that they would be happy to change their playing time around the varsity level tennis players, the representative of Regis had said, "You know what? We're here to serve you as well. We'll schedule our time around you." So I thought that was kind of an interesting story. And the second is, my husband and I, probably like many of you in the room, have coached, helped prep school projects, helped our kids in different areas. And with our three children, we've been involved with both the volleyball teams and the basketball teams, as well as other extracurricular activities. But I was always so surprised. I'm from a small town in Iowa. And when I grew up, you know, we really utilized our space as a... Our school space as a community. And I really noticed that over the years... I've lived here 22 years, and I don't really remember us holding tournaments for those different organizations. As a matter of fact, if you go on the Greater Northwest Basketball, so it's GNBL.org, you'll notice that there are hundreds of schools in the whole Northwest Wisconsin, including districts that have two high school districts, and they all host these type of tournaments. So it also kind of made me, you know, wonder what... Why? And we're going to talk about that later. Okay. Next page. So really, what we... We spend a lot of time reviewing the policy. And what we really recognized is that the facility use policy has morphed or changed over time for different reasons. And as we came and viewed this through the different lens and broke it down to some of the major concerns and issues, we really figured out that really a good recommendation for us that this policy should be broken into two different portions. And that's why we've proposed two exhibits. One facility use for the community and another one for Eau Claire School District events. So tonight, we really want to talk about our recommendation for the community aspect of activities and events and how that facility use policy works. So kind of like Bob alluded to earlier, the areas we decided to focus and address, there were numerous discussions about so many different aspects of the facility use policy. But we really decided to focus on these three of community service, customer service, dates of availability, and making sure we were aligning this Policy 830 with the district's policy. We really recognize that our presentation tonight and our recommendations tonight aren't all encompassing. We felt, once we kind of jumped in and spent countless hours discussing what some of the outcomes could be, we decided that there are so many different dynamic uses, dynamic issues around facility use. You know, and that dovetails into the district's commitment to youth athletics and how people perceive facility use, that we decided that we really were going to focus on the areas we felt were kind of win-win quick. I think us old people call that low-hanging fruit. But we really thought that we could address a few areas. And we really never intended this proposal to be all encompassing of all aspects of community use. Okay. I... As we were kind of talking about this and talking through some of the processes and some of our experience, we really were kind of talking about the software we use to make reservations in the district. This kind of hit close to home for me because I happen to be a software IT specialist. And that was kind of like software... Correct me if I'm wrong, high schoolers, but software is so dynamic, changing constantly, all the time. We felt one really way we could increase some of our customer service was to review our current software. I don't know how many of you have gone on the school district website, tried to reserve facility space, used SchoolDude, worked, you know, through their shuffled and tried to figure out how, you know, you could get different space. We also recognized that the current software we have is a limited package. And there are actually... Kim just told me today, there are options for that current software to maybe have some expanded functionality. But that's one thought to improving customer service is if we could work on some of the issues with the software. Like it has a very limited to sort and filter type of space you need. Because as I went into the software today, you know, there are hundreds of different community-type categories of people who use our space. Also, the waitlists aren't available. So say you might rent, you know, ask to use a facility space, and something happens and you have to cancel it. There isn't really a way to notify the next person that might be waiting for that space, which also leads into the notification of cancellation. Also is not super user-friendly and easy to use. So that is really our first recommendation is... Oh, okay.
So something just to summarize on that. So often, one of the things that causes frustration sometimes with community members is you'll hear people say, "Well, there was no gym time available. It just wasn't available. I can't get in." When in reality, there may actually have been some gym space available, but nobody... There wasn't a good mechanism to make people aware of that. So then you wind up with gyms sitting there empty, and nobody knew about it. So, right? That's kind of the crux behind what we think a software analysis might be able to help with.
I'll just interject. I know your recommendation is that we create another committee to review this stuff. Is there an interest within your current membership on your committee in looking at it? And just maybe bringing more people to the meeting?
Possibly. You know, we haven't asked that specific question. We weren't sure how that... How our recommendations then would be, you know, come to fruition. So I might be...
Yeah. I'm just... Because I think that that's certainly within the purview of what we wanted you to look at. So I think it'd be perfectly fine for that... For your committee to look at that and bring it to us as a future recommendation, the issue of the software as it relates to access.
For sure. And, you know, really, the fact that we know now that we're using a version of SchoolDude that could be limited. I mean, it might not even involve a change. So, okay, we'll take that into consideration, and that's a great idea. Okay. The... Next slide. So also, we were kind of looking through this for the lens from our community aspect of some customer service. And how are some ways we can kind of break down the barriers and recommendations that we would make on this? And a lot of that really focused around some of the contract processes. Right now, currently, if you have a contract to use... If you're a community organization and you have a contract to use facility space, that contract is non-transferable. So let's use this example. Say, for some reason, they would ever let me coach sixth grade soccer. And Bob here coached seventh grade soccer, and we were both part of the United Soccer Program. We... In the normal business world, you'd really have a contract signed per the organization, probably driven off your tax ID. And currently, if I'm practicing at a certain time and he's practicing at a certain time, even though we're really under the same organization, right now, the way the system's set up is that we... If we want to swap times because of a certain situation that happens kind of quickly, we would actually have to go through a process involving the district, which really kind of leads to extra work on the district and extra work for the folks working with them. And we do think it'd be easier if it was... If we can make transfers between an organization. Secondly, is kind of a cancellation policy. And this another seems just as we reviewed it, it seemed pretty easy that right now, there's a five-day business notification required from the time of event. However, we felt that actually during the regular standard operating hours, that if someone wanted to cancel within a day, say your organization gets the stomach flu this time of year, you know, things pop up where if you had 24 hours cancellation, we feel that that would be more in alignment with a customer service item. That would be easy to implement. And then anything scheduled outside those standard business operating hours, we would still include the five-day business cancellation policy. The third part of this component that we really felt like made a lot of sense and was easy to implement was currently the Policy 830 says that scrimmages, tournaments, and competitions that are allowed for different activities require separate applications. So kind of to go back, remember, he's the seventh grade coach. I'm the sixth grade coach. But we're really under one organization, and we have a contract. We have a tax ID, and therefore, we have one insurance policy. We kind of recognize that this probably was put in place to make sure if you had two organizations scrimmaging, that you would make sure we were covered under the liability insurance of each. But we'd like to propose that events between teams with the same organizations can happen during the rental time. So there are three committee recommendations regarding some of the customer service aspects that we felt would be really quick and easy to implement. There were a few other things that we didn't mention here that we can talk at length, and they're kind of easy things. Like right now, it says you can't bring any liquids into the gym. Well, that's obviously not in line with going to any sporting event at our high schools. Because I'm pretty sure we sell drinks to take in there.
Could I ask you a question about the customer service piece? Did your group talk at all about like a customer satisfaction survey for all of our users? Do they currently have that?
I can talk about that a little bit. Two things that Mr. Summerfelt after... We learned a lot, first of all, from the committee, just the district and listening to community members and listening to coaches and to athletes. We learned a lot. And one of the things that we learned was that customer service piece was really multifaceted. Some of it has to do with our agreements. Some of it has to do with our software. And so what Mr. Summerfelt and I talked about was really conducting a more in-depth study through buildings and grounds of what customer service looks like. And we've asked Michelle Radke to provide some information from the Family Engagement Survey around that customer service and potentially looking at another sort of assessment to help us gear. Like where do we... Where do we want to take this action plan to improve customer service and the perception?
Okay. Yeah. I think there'd be a lot of value in that. And in looking at the customer service piece from the standpoint of with our staff who are carrying out these things or managing these things, making sure that they're trained in customer service and that that is something that's ongoing. Because I think that that's kind of something that you don't think about as a school system, is a customer service training. But this is a... This is a kind of one of the business functions of our school district with this piece, so.
And I think in the most respectful way, we did hear that customer service from community members on the committee. Customer service makes a big difference.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. So those were our recommendations regarding that. Next slide. Also, in Policy 830, there are 10 holidays listed. We... The recommendation, you can read them right up there. They... The committee decided for community use of our facilities, it would be perfectly in line to recognize that we won't be scheduling facility activities on those 10 holidays for community access. All right. The next part of this is Policy 830 really... One of the impetuses is that its highest priority shall be assigned for Eau Claire Area School District school purposes, followed by groups that are not under the definition of school purposes but provide activities for school-aged children. So really, we should be utilizing our space for our kids. We recognize that. And what we did while we were doing some investigation, we noticed that currently, we have a...
Misalignment. Misalignment.
Well, yeah. We have a misalignment. But we have an agreement with the Parks and Rec Service that is really not in line with prioritizing our students above other activities. So for instance, this slide shows part of Exhibit... Our exhibit from Policy 830, the order in which activities are prioritized. So you can see that number three, Class Three, a group of adults could take prioritization over the facility above students of that same school district. And I personally, again, I'll just use my own personal world of volleyball. That happened quite often. My kids would be... I'd be trucking them to South, and then, you know, the Parks and Rec organization volleyball then would trump that student activity. We recognize that this is a little beyond... We have a recommendation for this. We really feel like if our district... Our policy needs to be in line with this agreement with Parks and Rec. We know that's outside the scope of our committee. We would actually like to recommend that we consider the next time we have the agreement with the Parks and Rec to try to realign that so that our students are put before different adult activities.
Is that an annual thing? MOU or five-year? Do you know what year we're in? Okay. That's fine.
We just really... That really stuck out to us. You know, let's utilize this space for our students, and that's not quite in alignment with our Parks and Rec. And we understand that, you know, we utilize some of their space for sure. But, you know, I feel like there could be an alignment to put our students first in different situations. And maybe that's just a compromise of using some of our spaces that aren't high student time. For instance, you know, Friday nights can be family night or activity night or concert night, you know? And we could align that a little bit better. So that was one of our recommendations, that we update the agreement with the city so that it's aligned with Policy 830. We really had a lot of amazing discussions, really dug deep into this whole policy. We recognize there are so many things outside of the scope of what we took on. We kind of, like I said, reviewed it. We prioritized. Really tried to work with the different facility use aspects. We... Some of the things outside the scope of this committee that I alluded to a little bit earlier. I personally would be so interested on our fee schedule, why we're perceived as cost prohibitive from activities coming to our spaces. That's maybe something outside of our scope of our committee, but we're interested in knowing more about that. knowing more about that. And then we have gotten some feedback about some hurdles put in place for facility use. It's so interesting to me, because Mr. Luganville, you're sitting right below the mission statement that says we should be building relationships, when I think of these graduates heading out the door, you know, I want our spaces to be someplace where they want to come back, where we celebrate alumni as well as the community. So we recognize that was a little outside of our scope, so we did want to mention those as further thoughts. Kind of in summary, our committee would like to recommend a number of changes, and we've outlined those in this presentation. And we're specifically talking tonight about Policy 830, the agreement that is relative to facility use for community members. We recommend, the changes we recommend tonight, we will believe would improve customer service and provide some clarity around some of the facility availability. We would like to also recommend that the district examine the alignment between the policy and the practice, especially regarding Parks and Rec, to make sure that we're meeting expectations and user-friendly to our community. Before we open it up for questions and discussions, I also want to make sure I take time to express my gratitude for our fearless leader, Kim Kohler, and everybody who participated. It was really fun to work with the students, and then everybody from the community and the schools were representative, and I felt like it was a very united voice on where we were going with our proposal. So with that, does anyone have any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I'm sure there will be. I, one question I just have initially is the, the piece with the holidays, I'm interested in knowing more about how that conversation went within the committee, if that was, because that seemed to be really, one of the catalysts to create this committee was a concern at the time about a community group and a community representative who wanted to use a district space on Christmas Eve with a community group. And that was one of the reasons that they wanted to talk through it. And I'm seeing that your recommendation is that it still be closed for community use on that day. So I'm just wondering if, was that unanimous within your committee, or was that, there was there a lot of discussion, or kind of what was the process with that?
Well, we, we, 90% of our time, I would have to say, is that fair, was talking about holidays. And there's a very strong feeling in this group about how holidays should be handled. And really, that specific group that you're talking about will probably fall under current students and staff, and that will come under Eau Claire School District use proposal.
Very different recommendations for community use versus Eau Claire district use as it relates to those dates. So stay tuned.
Because for a second, I was like, well, there's no controversy. And then you're like, no, no, we're coming later with that.
That would be way too easy.
Okay, that's good. Okay. All right, any, Commissioner Humbleboil?
So just to follow up on that, so the follow-up will be, school district, kids, employees, and alumni? Are they the connection as well?
So the...
For district use, are alumni part of that discussion as well?
Yeah, go ahead and question that. Depends on who you ask, I guess.
So specifically, if alumni work with the Booster Club, the Booster Club is considered Eau Claire Area School District. So Eau Claire Area School District would be ECASD events, district events, PTO, PTA, and Booster Club.
Commissioner Beekah?
It's a follow-up to your question about the holidays.
Oh, yeah.
I guess I still, I apologize, I don't, I don't fully understand why it wouldn't be relevant to the community groups. I'm thinking of it as a source of revenue, so the ability to have access to the facilities on those holidays.
So you're saying, just so I'm clear, so you're wondering, why would we not want to have those facilities open?
Correct.
On those holidays? Yeah. Well, I think it was our understanding coming into the committee, I mean, great question, but I think it was our understanding that there appeared to be such a strong stance against having these, our facilities open on the holidays, that we, we took it upon ourselves to try and show some compromise and concession with Policy and Governance Committee and so forth, and say, okay, if you're so strong on your desire to keep these facilities closed on holidays, we understand that for community use, but when we're talking about our high school athletic teams and so forth, that's a whole different story. So, and part of the problem was, is because at our committee meetings, we spent a lot of time talking amongst ourselves, and we didn't have any representate, representation from the board, or, you know, administration, or anything. We had, Kim was there, obviously, but it was hard for us to compromise and negotiate with ourselves when we had no interaction, right? So if someone had been there to say, you know what, what about this, what about that, we might have been a little prepared. So we were, we were trying to be in good faith, we were trying to say, you know what, if it's going to cause a problem around these holiday dates, it's more of an issue for the Eau Claire School District use than it is for the community use, so we'll just go ahead and concede the community use. That was kind of our thought process, right or wrong, that's how it rolled out. Wouldn't you agree?
Yes, yep.
I don't know if I answered your question, but...
Yeah, you did. That conversation was before sort of the current conversations about revenue. And so for me, we're in a different, we're kind of on a different page now.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And so I, I feel like I wouldn't want to just eliminate that as an option if it turns out it could be, could be a source.
I couldn't, thank you for that feedback. I mean, that is, really, we worked on this a lot, and we're really trying to come up with recommendations that we felt were fair, and it's been a longstanding tradition to really be conscientious of those dates, I think, as a working person, the day after Thanksgiving, I mean, that, 10 holidays, I get it. So maybe that is something we could reveal, but it's, yeah, for revenue cycle is a great reason.
I, I think if, if our committee were here and this question came up, I think they would likely all say, yeah, by all means, we should just leave it open for community use on all of these dates. If, if a community organization wants to, wants to occupy the facility on these dates, more power to them. I think that's what we would probably come up with. But again, we were trying to balance it with what we thought the current state of mind was.
And I think that, I think that there would be interest in entertaining that. And I think that it would be within certain parameters, though, because I think one of the conversations that came up in the past about it was, okay, if we allow to have the facilities used on these days, what is the requirement that a janitor be present? Is it there? Is it waived on holidays? Is it okay if it's just a coach? Who's opening up the building? That kind of thing. Or someone with badge access? So I think just fleshing that out and allowing for the flexibility was, was, I think, one of the important things, that we didn't want to make people work on Christmas Day, make people work on Thanksgiving.
And, and that was, you will, so this is like part one, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In our two-part series.
Right.
You will hear a little bit about that the next time we present.
Okay.
And, and one of the, one of the things that we did talk about on the community side of things is, if, if you are a community member in an Eau Claire School District building, it will require an Eau Claire District, School District staff member to not be with their family on a recognized holiday, and not maybe by their own choice. So the difference between a custodian having to be in the building because somebody is using the gym or the pool or the theater, might feel a little bit different than a varsity-level coach who's getting additional pay to work beyond contract time, to be in the gym, in the theater, in the swimming pool on a day that other staff members have off with their family. So we did weigh that. The, the overall consensus was, you know, I think if the committee had its druthers, they would say, let, you know, let's see how the holidays play out, we'll see what people request. But they also very much knew that that family time was valued, and, and the feedback was, should we preserve that family time? So it was a compromise on the part of the committee.
Do any of the board members have questions, or are you, are you suggesting that we, with the classes, that we swap Class Three and Four? Is that your suggestion?
That would be our recommendation.
I know we were on that, it didn't say that, but I'm assuming that's what you're...
Yeah, I think, and I think, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked that, because I think we need to be very clear on what our committee recommendation is, because what we're allowed to do as our committee and what we would recommend to do are two different things. So our committee was unanimous in supporting a change to the exhibit that would give priority to student activities over adult activities. We were unanimous in that, in that regard.
Right.
Now, we were, we also then understand that we're not able to, to give you a new copy of the, of the exhibit and make that change, because, well, first of all, I guess we had no authority, we weren't sure what our authority really was, other than to give you recommendations, but because of the...
That's it, but that's good. Recommend, we like recommendations.
Because of the arrangement with Parks and Rec, again, I've not seen the actual, you know, I don't know what language is in there, or not in there, or if anyone really knows, but the way it stands now is that an adult activity would take priority over a student activity. So we are recommending that that be changed. And in doing so, that, and that would actually align with what your Policy 830 states right now, is when that's shared with you. The policy itself supports that, states that very clearly. So the policy states that the exhibit under that policy is, does not support that. So there's a disconnect there. So it's up to you, or whoever, you guys, or whoever has the authority to straighten that out.
I don't know if any members of the board were, were there the last time it was approved. I do know administratively, with the relationship with Parks and Rec, that there seems, that they, they, they get this, and I know that Dawn Comptee over there has worked with us collaboratively on, when they have adult user groups, scheduling times as best they can that are not conflicting with children groups. So I, I almost wonder if they would be opposed to the change, because it seems like the practices, that they are already really accommodating that. So I wonder if they'd...
It's worth asking, and you know, one of the things that our committee thought about is, not only are we looking to, if we're going through this whole process, not only are we looking to address concerns right now in the present day, but we're looking to put things in place that would preserve that access for students moving forward when we're gone, or there's someone new at Parks and Rec, or the board's all new. So let's get this in a policy, or let's say there's an unanticipated spike in participation in some adult...
Pickleball.
Activity, pickleball or something. You know, not that that's a bad thing, but, but technically, then, those adult activities could bump our students out of the gyms every night of the week if they wanted, technically. I'm not saying they would do that, they likely wouldn't, but let's, here's an opportunity to get something written in policy that would preserve that protection.
Sure. Are there any other board member questions, comments? Okay. Oh, yeah, Commissioner Humbleboil?
I was on Policy when we went through all this. I just want to thank you for your work and put the committee together. I'm glad it turned out to be a diverse, wonderful committee. So thanks for your work.
Yeah, we look forward to hearing more and working on this. And are anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this? It is a committee report. Okay. Well, thank you very much. And well, as far as the next presentation on the other pieces, that'll be, you think, February?
February.
February 4th?
Yep.
Good. Thank you. That brings us then to our next agenda item, which is a Human Growth and Development curriculum update.
We were asked to do an overview for the board and our community of the current reality of the Eau Claire Area School District Health Program, and in there, the Human Growth and Development strand, and we'd like to do an overview tonight for you. So Ms. Rowe, Stephanie and I will present this evening, and then take any questions from the board at the end of our presentation. While Ms. Rowe is the expert practitioner who's here to present tonight, we'll do a lion's share of some of the topics that we'll get to, and want to make sure that we highlight all of our health practitioners, educators within the district, much of what we're going to talk about tonight. We presented to a community review, an overview of our Human Growth and Development Program. We did that last spring, and these folks helped us with that presentation, so their voices present here this evening as well. So, a successful health education program in Wisconsin is supported by both state and national standards. And Ms. Rowe, we'll dive into that, how they come alive in the classroom here in a moment, but we know that we combine both age-appropriate contact knowledge and overarching skills so that students are prepared for the different scenarios and different life events that will come their way, as they may matriculate through our society. Everything that we practice is supported by both state and national standards, both in Human Growth and Development, in our health curriculum, and really cross-cutting through all the curricular opportunities that we provide students. Best practices in the classroom, best practice in classroom instruction, and student engagement is paramount to student achievement in any area that we talk about, and curriculum and instruction. And Ms. Rowe will talk about some of the unique and interactive opportunities that our students are given by our instructors, and then the assessment that comes with that to demonstrate student learning. We certainly partnership, partner with our families and the community in our, in all of our programming, certainly in our health program and in our Human Growth and Development opportunities. We make that curricula available to parents, it's available for review. Our families are communicated with as we move into that piece of the curricular pacing guide. And that is also supported by Wisconsin State Statute 115 and 118 that asks districts to put together a robust Human Growth and Development Program that is supported by, by best practice both state and nationally, and then has things that are present that are, that give you the earmarks of age appropriateness, of appropriate goals, of public feedback and support, and an opt-out policy of family, we choose to exercise that. Then we also want to talk a bit about the progression of life skills that you'll find in our health curricula and in Human Growth Development, and understand this is a progression. Some of the skills and standards are more nascent, as it's age-appropriate, and some are more overt, overt, but certainly aligned to the adequate social and emotional growth for the student body. With that said, Ms. Rowe will take the mantle now and talk about some of the national standards, state standards, and how those matriculate into the classroom.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Rowe. I have been a middle-level health educator, and this is my 28th year. I have heard that you haven't been invited to do this, however, I am a very culturally relevant practitioner and educator, and I just want you to know that I invite you, if you choose to stand, if you would like to stand as, we are conversing with you, you are invited to do that. And I, I also got just a little bit of a, an ear that said, like, really, this isn't a long meeting. And I understand, however, as healthy human, human individuals, if you would like to stand, please know you are totally invited. So as we then dig deeper, or dive a bit further, I, I am privileged to represent our Eau Claire Area School District Health Team. We, we have a group of fantastic educators. As Dave spoke to our national standards through health, which then Wisconsin embraces, and the Eau Claire Area School District, to just highlight a couple of them. Health promotion is very, very important, along with the ability to demonstrate good decision-making in really all of the situations in which our students come to experience. As I then highlight just a couple of others, our interpersonal communication standard is with decision-making of utmost importance. And goal-setting, of course, is woven in there. Dave said that tonight, we look at Human Growth and Development, and please understand that it's just a slice of our entire health curriculum. So with these standards, they're all woven together with the life skills that we are helping our learners grow to be in as best health that they possibly can throughout their lifetime. And in Human Growth and Development, we then take those life skills to further enhance each individual wherever they are. In fifth grade, you can see that communication is present, respect, friendship, and we know that that would be interwoven through all of their curricular strands. With regards to puberty and growing and gender, that piece would... With regards to puberty and growing and gender, that piece would be a bit separate, where our young people then have a more directed instruction about puberty. A fifth grader would say that probably is their most uncomfortable experience in their elementary opportunities. When we then look further at seventh and eighth grade, we have the opportunity to have our seventh graders for one semester, and all our seventh graders experience it. In grade eight, we have a wellness elective, again, one semester. Currently, depending on our staffing, a building may or may not be able to have the wellness elective in grade eight. What you currently look at, are looking at, is really an overview of the different curricular content pieces in the human growth and development unit. At the middle level for grade seven, that is approximately, out of our 90-plus, well, really not quite that many, but our semester, about 10 to 12 days. For ninth grade, again, one semester of required health education for graduation, we're looking at approximately 20 days within that unit. Again, going back to the standards, because we align very well to the national sexuality standards, relationships and communication are, again, woven through the multiple skills in which we're practicing in the classroom. Glancing at seventh and eighth grade, if we're talking about relationships, we're not only talking about dating relationships, but we're looking at our friendships, our relationships with the adults that are around us, whether it's our classmates, our teammates, et cetera. Coming into human growth and development, as we use our communication skills to further develop our relationships, it isn't something that's new. We're just taking it on to the next step. We're using now a new content to, again, help foster our communication skills. Something that has been newer to us is weaving in consent. Consent in grade nine is very thoroughly taught. If we think about a seventh grader with regards to developmental appropriateness, talking deliberately about sexual consent, for we as middle-level educators believe that it needs to be softened a bit to then bring it forth through, into human growth and development. What do I mean by that? A small example could be using, how about Sam and Terry? Terry has a best friend, it's Sam, and he would really love to read her diary, or maybe she's writing a book. And as we then think about that situation, should Terry ask Sam if he can read her beginning nonfiction novel or her diary? Of course. Well, why is that? Because she is the individual that gets to set the boundaries about who reads her writing or her journal, or whatever it is that she's creating. As we think a little bit further through a different lens, how is it that if, by chance, Sam says, "Sure, you can read my journal," may she change her mind? Of course she may change her mind. Consent at a middle level is really about understanding that each individual has boundaries, really no matter what it is, and that we need to respect one another in those boundaries. Going a bit further, would I ever, if I'm Terry, would I ever ask Sam while she's sleeping, "Hey, you know what? Do you think I could read your nonfiction novel that you're writing?" Like, of course you're gonna laugh. And of course it wouldn't be okay for me to ask her when she's asleep. So then, as we enter into human growth and development, consent, it really isn't a big deal, because it's been brought up in other topic areas. Our middle-level learners, because obviously that's where I live and breathe, I probably am actually a middle-level learner, they are unbelievably mature when it comes to human growth and development and our content. It's about being interactive, it's about being at their level and relevancy, and creating a safe and safe climate, or safe and respectful climate. And please know, all of my educators, or all of the team, would be standing beside me, and they're phenomenal. I can't say enough. So then, as we move to grade nine with regards to human growth and development skills, we're again building upon what then the seventh grade experience has been. I'm not sure if you got to notice that within the standards, with describing, moving to demonstrating, to then moving to analyzing, in grade nine, we're doing much more analyzing and advocacy work, so that then we're building upon the stepping stones to fit with where our learners currently are. In grade nine, is consent specific with regards to the reduction of sexual assault, sexual harassment, rape? Of course it is. The language is explicit. Also with regards to sexuality, meaning gender identity, gender expression, sexual identity and sexual orientation, in grade seven, all of those vocabulary words are used. Our climate is about respect for all individuals, and again, our young people have that as part of their current community, and for them, I could be talking about the sun coming up in the morning, and it's really like a matter of fact. So with our most current curriculum updates, as we had the opportunity to speak with our colleagues and community members in how we are growing every day with the high needs that our learners face, you can see that the sexuality piece is first, with regards to contraceptive, contraception, excuse me. In grade seven and eight specifically, it's really about a condom, and with regards to a condom, it is simply a barrier, and thus there is not the combination of fluid. And when then we progress to grade nine, at least 15 forms of contraception are discussed, researched, compared and contrasted, obviously through a very medical perspective. And the last addition with regards to updating, looking at the comparing and contrasting of parenting, pregnancy, adoption, abortion, that is at the grade nine level, as then would not be appropriate for the middle level. And it's advocacy, it's using reliable resources, that enters in at grade seven, as you can imagine, with our technological safety and harassment prevention and bullying. You may have noticed that in grade nine, substance use and abuse was in there, and unfortunately, we know when substances are onboard, it can impair one's current boundaries, their relationships, their ability to communicate, and thus, it's revisited. So it's true, we have a strong human growth and development curriculum, but I believe that overall, it enhances the entire program so that it's very systematic in how it reaches the learners. In conclusion, the strategies of use are very interactive. As I stand before you and I'm lecturing, like lecturing, it doesn't work with our learners, as we could ask our high school representatives. So anything that could be hands-on, movement, role-play, scenario analysis, collaboration, learning from one another, that's where we try to be. As practitioners, we are ever-growing in the strategies that we use within our classroom to stay relevant. And as we look at the very bottom with regards to culturally responsive practice, it is essential for all of us to make sure that we are inclusive of all of our learners. Obviously, race as inclusive, but all of the ways in which we are diverse from one another. And we open to questions and/or response.
Any questions from board members or comments? Commissioner Humboldt Boyle?
I do. Thank you so much. I, as a board member, I'm a strong proponent of the part of our strategic plan related to social and emotional development, often building relationships and the fact that that all has to be there oftentimes for kids to learn. So I have a question about, I have this yin yang sometimes on compliance versus competence in looking at PBIS. And then, looking at your curriculum as far as the developmental levels that tie to PBIS for both educators and students as far as decision-making, the coping skills, conflict resolution, respect for all individuals, bullying, there's a cross there. So can you talk about how that gets collaborated or coordinated?
Do you want to take it to the office or the floor? Don't hold me, sir.
So what you're talking about is cross-cutting skills, right? So really, we know that the student is moving into proficient and advanced, if you want to use that language, in their health education skills, when they can apply it outside the classroom. And that's where we measure the PBA, you know, different PBIS measures that buildings have. So Stephanie and her team, they have students that are in health curriculum, and as you heard, they develop a skill based on a standard that cross-cuts throughout the health curriculum. Sometimes, if we talk about human growth and development, sometimes in a different area of health education. When a student then can apply that skill or that standard outside the classroom, whether it's in the building or not, that's when it shows up in that deep level of social-emotional learning. That's where your PBIS team wants to measure, right? The student acting and behaving in a way that is pro-growth, that is self-regulatory, that is age-appropriate, that it carries out the things that we talk about in the classroom, that practical application. So that's that higher level PBIS piece that you're talking about. And it's up for us, as adults in the building, to measure, to praise, to grow, then to react to areas where maybe we don't see that as much, and then we continue to, that continuous improvement cycle, right? Play and do a study and react.
The only thing I would add to that is that I believe our curriculum helps learners, more of our learners, remain in tier one instead of needing to move up to tier two and possibly tier three. That's probably a little too optimistic, but the more we can assist...
Do you see more of a need for it now than 20 years ago?
Sadly, I see too great of a need with regards to our social-emotional learning. Part of that is very, very sad with our mental crisis with our young people. Yeah, it's hard.
Commissioner Torres. Thank you for your presentation. It's really very interesting. I also think that the curriculum is very comprehensive, and from what I'm hearing is that you begin in the seventh grade, you might continue in the eighth grade, if the stars are aligned, and then you continue in the ninth grade for half a year, right? I have a feeling that that's not long enough to develop those skills in a full fashion and the dispositions. Also, considering the developmental level of the students in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. And they continue to develop in the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. So my question is, are there any possibilities of articulating the health and growth curriculum with other academic areas, such as language arts, science, math, social studies, so that you have reliable way to follow up and measure health and growth development as they are developed in seemingly disconnected academic areas, which are not?
You ask a good question.
Thank you.
Interdisciplinary curriculum is ideal, and time is also of shortness for us. So currently at the middle level, social studies and health quite tightly align. So there is then a weaving of our content through one another with emphasis that is quite smooth. However, I hear that having more connection for our learners really through all of our curriculums would help in helping them, like, understand and develop the life skills. I wish there was just more time available to do that.
Bob, I'll follow up with one question. Are there opportunities to do that? That is, are teachers in other areas ready and willing to make such articulation? I find this, you know, highly, I would highly recommend this articulation. Do you, from your perspective, do you find it easy to do?
My perspective would be colleagues and teams of educators are wanting deeper integration of our content area and standards, and would be very open to having greater opportunity for that collaboration, so that then we can deliver our content more closely aligned to one another, to support one another, and that in small pockets, we are working towards that. However, some of us may feel as if there is so much other that unfortunately, to be able to deliver my content well with my learners, the integration loses its priority. That's speaking honestly.
Yeah, that's fairly accurate. And in fact, Stephanie's more articulate than I'm gonna be on this, but you've got 16 ounces of time, and you've got 24 ounces of content, standards, skills, that you want to put into that time container. So what you say is, would be the optimal place to get there. We're on a journey towards that, understanding there's just the competition of the time, the space, the resources, and the academic demands that cross-cut, and especially as you move through the system. No doubt, certainly, there would be a need and desire, a space to continue this more health education strand as you move through the secondary level. There's competition of when and where and how. So, yes, not as formally as you would like, maybe that you're suggesting, but there is opportunities to integrate that work, maybe not as strained through as would be optimized.
Abby?
I just want to, first of all, say thank you so much. Like, I cannot reiterate how much, as a student, how essential this is to learn and be taught to be safe and responsible, and just an overall, just a complete education. Anyways, I do have a question regarding, like, the sexual harassment and assault. When you teach it in the ninth grade, is it included, is it just hetero, between heterosexual, or is it all-encompassing with the LGBTQ A+? Like, is it just between a male and a female, or is it...
No, it would be inclusive with regards to LGBTQ plus A.
Okay, thank you. Because it wasn't when I went through, so it's nice to see that change.
And that's where, when we aligned with the national sexuality standards, it was us being given permission, especially because of DPI expectations through our advisory committee, to then have that be aligned with our district values.
Thank you.
There's a significant update of language and working with students to develop that skill would be cross-cutted, so you could play in all different types of relationships. So, thanks, Abby. Good question.
Commissioner Harker?
Yeah, I want to thank both of you for presenting this detail. It's really great to hear. I would also agree with Commissioner Torres. I'd love to see more of it, and continuing on in the 10th and 11th grade especially. But I understand the... But I understand the 16 and 24 ounce problem you described. It definitely makes sense. I, I had a question about, you know, these are kind of heady topics, some of them, and how, what is the, the policy and the practice in terms of coordinating with parents on, on these topics and sort of helping to reinforce them at home if possible?
Thank you, Mr. Harker. I forgot to bring that up. At the beginning, in all of our middle schools, before, or approximately two weeks into the start of our school year, we hold a parent guardian adult health education night where then our adults, sometimes students have the opportunity to come in and we then talk about our human growth and development curriculum and address questions. Our numbers aren't that high in attendance. It could be because we're veteran educators and we've had their children. There is that opportunity. Also, many of us through Skyward communicate what we are currently doing within our classroom. It could be as simple as front loading assignments to then see what is coming. I'm, I'm kind of an over communicator, so I probably shouldn't say like a whole lot more because I, I do know that with regards to any of the levels, we have at least two student adult interactive types of component within the human growth and development unit. As an example, in grade seven, it's called how well do you know your adult? Again, being sensitive to language, maybe that I, as a student, live with my grandparent or I may live with my step parents, so adult is inclusive. And it's just a simple interview with some easy questions and then some that get further into home value systems. And it's a conversation with then just an initial to engage in practicing face to face. That's new. Communication with their significant adult. So again, trying to help in the communication piece and having interactive activities. The more communication that's available, I believe it, it helps our families know what we're talking about. And they also may have an opportunity to every now and then bring up something that's happening in their, all, any of their classes for a further conversation. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Glenn?
Well, aligning with the previous statements, I would really like to thank you again, especially for the inclusion of the discussion of consent. Coming through the health program, I came here a little bit later, but that was definitely a need that I saw. Specifically, I would like to ask about the last point, culturally responsive practices. This is very specific, but is there a discussion of FGM? I guess it would be a ninth grade topic.
Yeah, can you define that?
FGM is female genital mutilation, also known as female circumcision. It's common in some Sub-Saharan African cultures, and it's rather controversial.
You ask a, a great question, but I don't know your, I don't know an answer.
That's all right.
I, I have a wonderment with regards to some of our history perspectives offered in the high school curriculum.
So can I point in the social studies curriculum, 912, where that specific topic is touched on? No, I can't. In our world studies and our world studies courses specifically, we do talk about different cultures, different practices, different areas of the world. If and when that topic is touched on, that would be the area that it would be. What we would hope is that through the different skill development that we impart to the students in our, in our system, that maybe we don't talk about a specific content area or a specific topic, but through their iteration of skill development, becoming discreet learners, be able to do research and, and those things on their own, that to be able to discern through a topic of that nature, right? Be able to sort that, that business out, learn about that, whatever the practice is, you know, that practice or, or whatever the controversial topic is, and then be able to import that, that knowledge so, so they can move forward as practitioners and understand. So that's the idea of teaching students standards and skills in a way to be able to apply it across different curriculum areas. So I can look in more about that specific topic, but I know that if we don't touch on a specific real discreet topic, we're hoping that the skill, the student, the skills that a student develops gives them the ability to apply.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you very much for this wonderful report and thank you, Ms. Rowe, for being such a great teacher leader in our district. Great questions all around, so. All right, that takes us then to the 2019-20 budget preview. Oh, was anyone in the audience wanting to speak on that? I apologize. Okay, I don't see any.
Hi, everyone. It's your favorite topic tonight. We're starting very early in the year. Just reminding everybody that we do start our budget process really this early in the year, and it takes us all the way until the end of November before we have a formal adopted budget. So just a few things that I wanted to share tonight with the board and just start, you know, thinking about what's coming up and making sure that we're aware of those important conversations that are currently happening. So tonight we'll start off with our operating fund balance. We've been talking about that a lot. And so I've shared this previously, but I wanted to reiterate again tonight that the auditor recommendation for fund balance is between 20 and 33% of our fund 10 expenditures. You can see at the end of our 1718 year, we dipped below that 20% goal of 19 and a half percent. If we were to hit that 20% goal just for that year, we would need to have just over $26 million, which is about 3.8 million. I'm sorry, that's not the right number. It needs to be over 26 million, and so we're about $800,000 short of that goal. And that is impactful when we think about what our budget deficit projection is for this year of that 3. almost 2 million that was adopted. If we wanted to be on the high end of that conservative recommendation, we need to be in that $42 million range, which is very significantly different from where our projected end of 22 million is for the 1819 year. The other thing that we wanted to share with the board was just to, at that June 30th balance, you know, 67% of the fund is liquid at that point in time. That's also a very cash rich time for us. We receive a large aid payment the last week of June, and so that also inflates that number and makes us look better than we really might be throughout the course of the rest of the year. And so when we're talking about that liquidity and what do we have available to spend, June 30th is a good time that we have additional liquid funds on hand at that time. It's very different than what we might see right now in January, for example. If we want to talk about the revenue assumptions and what do we know right now for the 1920 year? If everything was the same as it was in 201819 and the current law remains as it is today, we would be aided on a three-year membership average of 11,273 students. And the per pupil categorical aid would be reduced from $654 per pupil to $630 per pupil. And that equates to about $270,552 in revenue reductions for the Oakley School District for 1920. Obviously, we have a new governor that was put into place today, and we haven't seen the formal budget proposal, and so we don't know how that is going to be different or how it's going to impact. All I can tell you is what do we know based upon the current law today? The other thing that we've been hearing kind of from people paying attention to the budget and other school districts is that it's likely we may not have a state budget. When we start the year, we may not know what those numbers are going to look like. So we will get an aid projection on July 1st from DPI, but it's going to mirror what the law is at that point in time, and it may look very similar to what our numbers are today. And things could change after that, and so it could make a difficult time in estimating our revenue when we're building this budget for the 1920 year. I wanted to review the deferred budget requests from our 1819 budget and what actually made it into the 1819 budget and the deferred amounts. So you remember us talking about the technology refresh? That's primarily the iPads. And what we did is we said we would incur the cost to renew, refresh a third of them this year. So that deferred amount is essentially the remaining two thirds. Buildings and grounds equipments, their requests were just over $450,000. We ended up adopting $88,000. So that leaves a difference of $367,000. Musical instruments, you might remember that we discussed that. The plan was to use 150,000 and we landed on 50,000. The mentor year program was fully funded in the 1819 budget. Projectors in the tech ed area, the request was for 160,000. We funded half of them. The culinary project was reduced from a request of 700,000 down to $200,000. Other buildings and grounds reductions were a total of 335,000, and SIP plan reductions were another 117,000. So when we compare those two columns, it was a net savings or a net difference of $3.2 million. And again, going back to our fund balance, we did adopt a budget with almost a $3.2 million deficit. And if we would have had these included, that would have made our deficit that much larger. This is what we know from the 1819 budget. We haven't completed a needs assessment yet. We anticipate that to start on February 1st, and then that will take us several months to be reviewing and bring into budget development. So kind of as we talked earlier, it's a long process for us and we have a lot of work to do. But these numbers will be different because that's based upon what the requests were last year, and it's likely there's new ones that have been identified. In addition to items that we are already aware of is that the North Band Program was slated to get new uniforms this, in the 1819 year, but due to a staffing change, that was delayed. And so I'm sure that's going to be, you know, part of the conversation for 1920 and where does that come in? And again, with the culinary project reduction, our capital improvement budget will likely be higher in 1920 because we reduced that in order to focus on that referendum work and get that done. Those are the things that, you know, I can, I'm potentially aware of now, and I'm sure that list is going to grow, but I wanted to just share with the board what we had already were aware of. Let's talk about our unknowns. The CPI increase for the 2019 budget year is not released yet. And so two things with that, when that's released, then the board will need to make some decisions about base wages and what does that look like and will there be a CPI increase offered to staff? We anticipate receiving that information and working on that the last part of January, early part of February. Our health and dental rates, I think everybody is very aware that our health and dental insurance is out for bid right now. And if we took a conservative estimate based upon our last cap that we had using 5%, we'd have a minimum increase of $1 million just related to health and dental insurance for the 1920 year. I can't predict that, but we just wanted to give an idea of what that might look like. If we talk about estimated salary level changes, based upon the staff that we had and based upon this year's numbers and where things landed, we would be looking at an increase of $1.4 million. Again, that's just an estimate based upon our measurement date, but again, it's a, it's a big number that we need to be aware of as well. The other unknown, and we've talked lots and lots about this, is our OPEB. We are getting an updated study that will be presented probably to budget development and then onto the full board in the next few board meetings. And so just, we wanted to have that on our list because this year we had an almost $900,000 increase to our budget related to those costs. You know, it's really hard to predict right now. We're pretty early in the phase, but I just want the board and everyone to be aware that this is a long process, and it looks like it's going to be another difficult year when we start to build our 1920 budget. So with that, I will ask if there's any questions.
Commissioner Hambuk Boil?
Just me again, sorry. I just, the Blue Ribbon Commission, recommendations of the commission came out January 4th. Did you get a copy of them? So I mean, they went bolder than I thought they would. And truly watching their discourse and the input from their members and the people that stood up for public schools across the state of Wisconsin, I, I'm hoping that that makes a difference. And one thing I wanted to bring up, a couple of the things that might make people smile is they did talk about the times during the year that the money comes in and how hard that is. They, they want to change that. I mean, I, I went, yes. They also said that they spent a long time talking about special education funding, and they went bolder with that than I thought they would. So that was good to see. And I have a copy of it here. If anybody wants to, to get a copy, you can just go to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, go under Legislative, and it's right there. You can pull it up and read it. It's quite extensive, but I, I mean, I'm hopeful. And the people that participated very solidly in that process are hopeful as well, so keep your fingers crossed.
Commissioner Vu?
Thank you for the report so far. When, when we talk about budget, the bulk of the expenses are centered around salary. When are we hearing about that piece, how it fits in this picture?
I think we'll hear more as we start the budget process. I think probably the first piece that you will be reviewing will be the CPI increases because that's probably the first thing that comes to the table. The staffing process is, the discussions have already started and the meetings are set, and I think that will be happening over the February and March timeline. And so there'll be updates, I would think periodically through that as well. As far as some of the other benefits, like the health and dental piece, the bids are due January 17th, and then there will be some review process with our insurance consultant and the holistic committee before the board actually first sees it. And I would anticipate that we would be bringing that to the board sometime in March. I'm not sure if you have other specific questions that you're wondering about related to that? But that's when we would start the timing of building the budget for the, the salary and fringe piece.
Commissioner Torres?
I have a question. It's an operational question. Where are the special education costs charged? Where do they reside? In each building or are they consolidated in central office?
That's a really great question. So it's a two-part answer really. So previously, previous to this school year, they were housed in account of Fund 27, which is the special education fund, and we put them in location 732 was really district wide. We could tell you which buildings they were in based upon running some reports behind the scene. But now with all of the ESA reporting, we are required to report it by building. And so we have made some adjustments based upon our budget, and we're working on getting the actuals moved to where they need to be because all of that was finalized after the budget kind of was in there. So when a building runs their reports, they have to run them a couple of different ways to be able to see the costs. But the special ed costs are, are all contained in Fund 27 because that's the special ed fund that we're required to use. But yes, a building will be able to easily now see just by running their building location report, here's what the special ed costs were, because so much of it is related to salary and fringe, and so now that's appearing on their reports.
I was asking that question because now that the cost of central office would appear leaner, could we think in ways to streamline and make the costs more effective in central office as a way to reduce a little bit the budget?
Yeah, I think you would maybe want to have some more ideas of what, what you're thinking, because I think when we run the reports for special ed, we're not necessarily looking at, I'm just going to use location 732 because that's kind of been where we've housed the special ed costs. I don't know that I would say it's strictly just to central office, because the detail down behind it really tells us what buildings. And so we still have costs in location 732 because we have staff that's assigned district wide. And so yeah, there is going to be a big difference in looking at those reports, but I'm not sure how, if you have ideas or something that you're thinking about the central office looking leaner.
I don't have ideas.
Okay.
I just had the idea that we need more ideas.
I just had the idea that we need more ideas.
Gotcha. Okay, and I can certainly look at the reports and see if anything, you know, maybe jumps to mind, but off the top of my head, I'm not sure that I would be able to come up with something real easy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. I don't see any other questions, but thank you for this report. Does anyone from the audience have questions? Okay, I don't see anyone. Our next agenda item regarding Policy 153.12, concussion and head injury management, we will move that to our meeting in February to allow for time with the consultants' feedback, if that's okay with everyone. Okay? And then are there any requests for future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, then I would entertain. Oh, yes, Commissioner.
I wish I would have noticed this earlier, but our next meeting is scheduled, there's a conflict with the Dr. King Remembrance Event for the community.
Oh, okay.
And I don't, I don't know how that's been handled in the past, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. The event starts at 6 o'clock, but I know it doesn't just last an hour. I don't know.
Yeah. Our next meeting is the, will be the, kind of in work session format for the board self-evaluation. So I, you said it's at 6? What do board members think about that? About either move, we could either move it to earlier in the day, that day, like we could do at 4 o'clock? Or we could, we have time to change it, so. I think you're, I think you're smart to accommodate that and I'm glad you caught it. And I know that we're sponsors of it this year, so that's good. Would board members be available at 4 on that day? Okay. Four, would four, okay. So let's go ahead and just move it to 4 o'clock. So we'll do it from 4 to 5:45 and be there in time at 6. And I think since that's really for our work, for our board self-evaluation, we, what'd you say?
Just ask if you had a closed session that you have to schedule.
We don't have one scheduled for that day yet. We have a closed session scheduled for this Wednesday and we'll continue that with the same time. But yeah, so the date, what day is it? January?
21st.
January 21st, we'll do 4 o'clock for the work session. Okay, all right. Any other requests for future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, and then once we've adjourned, we'll go right and reconvene in closed session. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned. See you in closed session.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.